First, this is the prayer of the day for All Saints' Day. And we'll begin by praying that out loud and together. Almighty God, you have knit your people together in one communion in the mystical body of your Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord. Grant us grace to follow your blessed saints in lives of faith and commitment, and to know the inexpressible joys you have prepared for those who love you through Jesus Christ, our Savior and Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen. You are welcome to keep those. Now, if you would take one of these and pass them on.
Oh, well, you don't hand back.
I knew that. I had heard that before.
It's more useful today.
You have too many teachers in this room.
It's just the truth.
Mayor's supposed to take one and pass it on. There's a white man in direction. Call her there.
So, this is kind of the process here. I have great hopes to get into chapter two today, but let's see if there are any questions from last time. And then there are a few things that I need to review before we go on, because it will be easier to go on at that point. So, anything that occurred to you? Let's see, Carol, you'd asked about, we will talk more about that repeatedly in the book. Al, you had a...
Did Ruth and Boaz have any other children?
We don't know.
There was no genealogy kept for Boaz?
Beyond the first son? No, because that's the one that, well, not that we know of.
Well, it'd be under Boaz's lineage. It wouldn't be under Ruth's.
Right. But once that heir is produced that leads to David, that's the end of the writer's interest, it appears. Now, whether there were more, I mean, a typical Israelite marriage, that there'd be several more, if at all possible. She wasn't. That's the, I mean, that's the point. Now, the, but both sons?
No.
Well, I mean, so, was there in the mind of, yeah, it's a story that may be rooted in his, have a point to make in that regard, that Israel is the place where you produce children, not Moab. That Moab is a barren land for the sons of Israel. I don't know, but the fact that neither of them produces a son leads me to think that the writer is really making a point about Moab compared to Israel. But if we're talking just straight reproductive biology, you know, the issue is with, in Ruth's case, anyway, the issue is with the husband, not with the way through that. But Hlimalek dies, the sons die, there's no heirs produced, nothing, and nothing good happens to them in Moab. They return to Israel, you know, there's a husband, there's a son, Naomi's no longer empty, Israel's the place to be, huh?
But Ruth was from Moab.
Right. Yeah, yeah. But she didn't produce a child in Moab. Land matters to Israel. Land matters to Israel today. So, where you are, you know, where is the promised land? It's not Moab. Where is the land flowing with milk and honey in Exodus? It's not Moab, huh? It's Israel. So, again, it's not being made by the writer, or editor, or second editor, or whoever, whoever it is. So, good question. Other things that came up in your thinking? Well, let's pick up a few things from the early part of chapter one here that are worth at least reviewing, if not, I think I mentioned this last time, but it really is worth remembering throughout Ruth. In chapter one, verse four, the two sons of Naomi, "These took Moabite wives." The verb there is not the verb for proposed, or engaged, or got married, it's for abducted. It's for took, literally. And the use of that verb that occurs most closely in the Christian Judges, that verb is used in Judges 21:23, and that's a clear abduction involving rape. So, this particular verb is not, when it comes to a man taking a woman, this is not an... And we should be... Abduction and rape leading to marriage was not unusual in the ancient world, and in fact, is even put into Old Testament law in Numbers 31. So, or, I mean, it's introduced in Numbers 31. It's put into Old Testament law in Deuteronomy, chapters 20 to 24. That's just important to keep in mind. And for me, it's really striking when you think that this is how things began, and we talked last time about maybe it was an arranged marriage, and the girls were young and didn't have a say in it anyway, but this has a heightened level of violence to it. And 10 years later, Ruth wants to go home with Naomi, even though things began this way. I just think that's interesting. There's a sense in which, not to put too fine a point on it, that Naomi is sort of Job in a skirt, that one of the things in the first two chapters of the book of Ruth is talking about not only, you know, why, how do these, and why do these terrible things happen, but Naomi says rather clearly in verse 13, "These things have happened because the hand of the Lord has turned against me." Her explanation for what has happened to her, the death of a husband and two sons, and perhaps the famine before it, is because somehow God is, the Lord is, against her. Same language that Job uses at a couple of different points. So, that's one of the things that is going on at some points in the book of Ruth as well, is struggling with how and why these things happen, at least to Naomi. Yeah, Connie?
If this is how Ruth, Naomi's two sons, took their wives by abduction, maybe Naomi was, maybe she was kind of Ruth's protector against her son?
Could be.
And that's why Ruth revered her so much, is because she acted as a protector?
That may be, you know, one of the things about having a narrative like this is that it allows us, you know, to explore those possibilities. If that were the case, I would say, and this isn't authoritative, but I think that that would be highly unusual. Now, that doesn't invalidate your point at all, but in Mediterranean culture, the closest relationship in that culture typically is between mother and sons. That's a closer relationship than between wife and husband, for example. If you want to see in a fictional way how a Mediterranean family works, just go back and watch reruns of Everybody Loves Raymond. Which relationships are the closest?
Yeah.
And there's a competition typically between the mother and the daughter-in-law for the son's affection, allegiance, more accurately, obedience, attention. I mean, that's, it's interesting and funny in lots of ways, but that's one of the things that little show illustrates what first-century Mediterranean family relationships looked like in terms of emotional dynamics, at least as far as sociologists and biblical scholars can tell. So, if Naomi adopted that position with Ruth, it would have been unusual, which might make your point even stronger then, that Naomi works against all the expectations that her family would have had of her, that the sons, you know, are the most important, and she's on their side, and they're on her side. So, it doesn't necessarily argue against what you're suggesting. It wouldn't have been very likely, but certainly not impossible. And if it happened that way, it would account for Ruth's loyalty.
I thought that, we haven't gotten there yet, but I thought that Naomi encouraged Ruth to have this relationship with...
With Boaz. Uh-huh. Yeah, yeah. Now, does Naomi do that? And when we get to that, we'll discuss this further, but just to kind of put a marker there, different readers read that different ways. Does Naomi do that primarily out of a concern for Ruth, or primarily a concern for Naomi herself, and her social security, and her son, and the lineage of the family, and protecting the land? Is it some of both? That can be read in several different ways. There's a lot of self-interest that Naomi can satisfy by getting Ruth married off to Boaz. You know, there's no social safety net, you know, a widow woman like Naomi is going to be provided for by the next generation, or she's going to starve. Those are really the options. So, it's in her interest to get Ruth married off to, maybe no one knew better than Naomi the reason why Ruth had no children, and she understands that now there's a chance. How is she going to get, how is she going to keep that land and that inheritance within Hlimalek's line, within his family? On the other hand, she may well have been Ruth's best friend and her advocate. And those aren't necessarily exclusive either. It could be both. But it's not clear that it's one or the other. So, Al, you wanted...
Has anybody thought it might be Stockholm syndrome?
Well, there is, I mean, you know, there's certainly, and we'll talk about this a little bit in, just down the page, just a little bit. You know, is this, does Ruth go through some sort of conversion, which sometimes is how it was described in previous generations? So, well, so, let me just put a marker in that, we'll come to that in just a couple of minutes here, because maybe it is. Oh, back to the connection between Ruth and Naomi. Now, in verse 14, it says, you know, that Ruth clung to, or cleaved to Naomi, hung on her, wouldn't let her go. There's one other place where that verb is used in the Old Testament, and that's when a man leaves his father and mother and cleaves to his wife. Same verb. So, at least in the Old Testament, this leaving and cleaving isn't necessarily just related to the sexual relationship between the man and the woman, it is, it is a degree of commitment. A couple of scholars have suggested that the real point to that word is, people who cleaved to one another started a new family. Ruth and Naomi, I mean, this is an odd, for Israel, this would be an odd sort of family, but that's exactly what they do. They sort of relaunch the family together. So, now, that takes us to the, what you raised, Al, you know, what's going on here? Particularly, a biblical scholar by the name Paula Fredrickson addresses this, and not specifically with Ruth, but it's transferable. She suggests, quite rightly, that in the ancient world, there really is no such thing as religious conversion, because religion is not a separate thing. It's not separate from family, and tribe, and nation. That's a modern invention, when we separate these things, these things out. If you adopted, if you had an allegiance to a different God, that meant that you were connected, you had allegiance to that God's country, and people, and tribe, and clan. It all went together. And so, for Ruth to say, and she says it, huh, you know, you know, your people are my people, your God is my God, I mean, you know, this is much more like sort of adoption than conversion. And it also requires the renunciation of her current status, of her current family, and tribe, and nation. You can't, in the ancient world, you don't, you don't get, you don't get to be a little of this and a little of that. That's really not an option. This Moabite woman calls the Israelite God by God's proper name, which in the NSV is the Lord, but that's more of a euphemism for God's proper name, Yehovah, which faithful Jews wouldn't say out loud, and by and large, still do not. This isn't some sort of religious decision for Ruth in isolation from family, and tribe, and nation. It all goes together. It's an interesting question, whether Ruth thinks somehow she becomes Israel's God, is that that God somehow can work in Egypt to release the slaves, for example. You know, we're, we are modern Enlightenment, post-Enlightenment people, and so, we always have to do some cultural translation. So, no, Moab's gods would have been different, and Ammon's gods would be different, and Syria's gods would be different, and Egypt's gods are different. And the weird thing about Israel's God is that Israel's God can't stay home somehow, shows up in these other places. And many people would have found that strange. I mean, you know, why does Pharaoh say, why should I listen to you, Moses? You know, yes, so, yes, there's this God that exists in Israel, you know, whatever. And then, all of a sudden, Pharaoh discovers he's wrong, and is quite surprised that that could have happened. So, this is, this is about switching a whole life, not just, you know, what, in our terms. I mean, you know, so, if you're a Christian, does that affect your citizenship in this country? No, no. Does it? Yeah, it might cause some questions for some family members, but are you required to renounce your family when you do that? No, no. We separate those things out, but that wouldn't happen in the ancient world. As Paula Fredrickson says, "Gods are in the blood," as in, in the taking of these brides, then I think some of the answers probably, yes. Yeah. I mean, it's not directly transferable, but it may well be that Ruth and Orpah were both pretty much completely cut off from their previous family and nation already. That may be. We don't, we don't know. That would make Ruth's expressions of allegiance impressive and a little more self-serving, if that's the case. Lighter than that. So, it's an interesting question, Al. I'm not sure of the answer, but it's an interesting framework of conversation. Yeah, go ahead, Sherry.
I think for Ruth, though, the more you think about it, you know, she was taken...
Women, and that would be true for widows who were unprotected. Yeah, I mean, the options really come down to poverty or prostitution.
And so, she's probably saying, no, 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 I'll stay with you, there's a life here, and, you know, I'm a little bit bitter, but I have food, I have a community, there isn't anything for me at home.
That may well be. You know, last time, we talked about, you know, the different lenses that we can bring to the story, and some, you know, goodness, somebody should have some who hasn't had some yet.
Well, I have, John and I'll share.
You sure?
John and I'll share.
You shouldn't want to. Well, I'll get through it here. So, you know, so, how do we, how do we read that? And it isn't necessarily all one or the other, either, Sherry. I mean, yes, there's nothing for me to go back to, but I also really could, I'm a burden on Naomi, potentially, I, you know, have been, I haven't been productive, she's kept us, you know, treated us well, I mean, potentially. But I think you raise a good point, maybe there was nowhere for her to go. That would be true when she got to Israel, though, too, really. She'd beat our simulated Seder experiences. You'll remember that one of the things on the table is called marar, so call me bitter. You know, Ruth kind of fades into the background at best for a while here in these few verses, as far as the women of Bethlehem are concerned. They won't notice in the seven sons, but not worthy of much notice right now.
Are the Moabites a very trusting nation? Because, I mean, Ruth is really about one of the most trusting people I know. I mean, she had to trust when Naomi said, "You will go to Boaz, this will happen." And then, when she went to him, she was concerned about what would happen to her even the next day. I mean, that takes a lot of trust, a lot of faith, or, you know...
Unless you're just out of options. What was Ruth's option? I mean, you may well be right. And again, this is in the context of the story. There's no chance for us to get behind the story and have a study of the historical Ruth, if there was one. That's not available to us. Certainly, one way to read it is, yes, she trusted Naomi implicitly, she did what was told, what she was told, and it all worked out well. Another way to read it is, what else was she going to do? You know, go back to Moab? I mean, and, you know, we can't really read the character of a group from Ruth as such, but there are, there are some things that we know from the Old Testament about the assumptions that Israel made about Moabites. Simply, the name Moab means "from the Father." And that father is Lot in Genesis. The story of the origin of Moab, you might recall, is that Lot's daughters are sure they're not going to find husbands, and so, they're not going to produce heirs, and so, they get their father drunk and have sex with him, and one of them produces a baby. And on the line goes then. So, "from the Father" is a way, I'm not sure if the Moabites necessarily initially called themselves this or not, because it's not complimentary. For Israelites, I think the name means product of incest. Means product of incest. Lot's daughters produced a baby from their father, and his name was Moab. So, this is, you know, it's not a nice story. Moabite women are described in the early parts of the Old Testament as hypersexual, and always on the prowl, and always available. Again, not very complimentary. Moab is restricted from the assembly of the people for at least 10 generations. That's in Deuteronomy. They're, you know, so, 10 generations had not passed since then, but here's Moab in the assembly of God's people. What in the world's going on here? So, all of those things go into the Israelite understanding of who these Moabites are. So, here comes Ruth from Moab, and, you know, everybody knows what the rules are, Moabites aren't supposed to be there. And, you know, sometimes when people show up and they're not supposed to be there, we just pretend they're not. Yeah, I don't know, but I think that's part of the author's intention in that little vignette. Yay, hooray, Naomi's back, we're so glad to see her. You know, church people never do that. We're so glad to see the people that we've known. We don't notice the people we don't. You know, it's a normal human response. So, they make their way back from Moab to Israel. Verse 22, "So, Naomi returned together with Ruth, the Moabite, her daughter-in-law, who came back with her from the country of Moab. They came to Bethlehem at the beginning of the barley harvest." So, this is in the spring that they come back, and I don't know if that's terribly significant, but that's when the barley harvest happens. Okay. Anything else before we go on now to chapter two? Not bad.
Well, I relate, you know, the story to, I guess, to our own experiences of today. And I feel that Ruth has like a mother-daughter love, and her end is committed to her because of this love. And, you know, it's natural... And, you know, it's natural, when you marry, to go to the, with your husband. Well, that's what she did. She went to, she went with her husband, or she met her husband in Moab, but then when he died, she went, because of her commitment to the mother-in-law, she went back to Israel.
Now.
And I know you get different interpretation with your Greek. I realize that, but.
No, it's more, I mean, it's more in the text than just, I mean, in the story than it is in just linguistic. I mean, on the one hand, Israelite culture, as it's described in the Bible, in the Old Testament, is predominantly patriarchal. And by that, we would mean predominantly it's men who are in charge. Not all men, but some.
Patriarchal means women.
Patriarchal. Man, that's right. So, she's in a position of making independent decisions. So, and there are, and we'll see in the text that when it comes to the public decisions that need to be made, a man makes those. Boaz and his kinsmen have this agreement later on. Decisions within the household and within the family are often made, however, by, in Israelite culture. So, some biblical scholars would describe it as, as a technical term, but as heterarchical. That is, different people are in charge in different circumstances, but it's predominantly patriarchal. It is certainly what's called patrilineal, that is, that the inheritance of necessarily natural, that the wife goes to the husband's family. In some cultures, the husband goes to the wife's family. But in Israel, it is patralocal, so that the wife attaches to the husband's family. But once the husband is dead, that legal attachment ceases to exist, which.
Not the husband's, the husband's brothers.
Oh, we'll come to that. That's called leverate marriage. Yeah.
I'm having myself.
No, no, that's right. You are absolutely right, and that's, and we're going to talk about that when we talk about Boaz. But you may notice that Naomi doesn't mention this institution of leverate marriage to Ruth while they're still in Moab. Naomi doesn't say to Ruth, now, you know, "If you come along with me back to Israel, I have these cousins." What does Naomi say? "I got nothing. Are you going to wait around till I have another son?" I mean, this is what she says. She doesn't say, "I can get you married off to somebody else." She says, "There's no future. Go back to your families. Go back to your families." So that when the husband dies, that patralocal connection ceases to exist, which is why Ruth does the unnatural and the unexpected thing and stays attached to her now former mother-in-law. Son's dead. Naomi is no longer Ruth's mother-in-law in legal terms. She's not.
Legally not.
Yeah. Well, this is, that's what's going to make a difference in terms of whether you can be married or not, whose family you're part of, whether you have land or not, whether you can inherit or not, is those legal definitions. You can feel however you want, but that's what, that's what's going to, that's what drives the plot. Now, it's interesting, in chapter two, Naomi refers to Ruth as "my daughter." So, I mean, so you're right in terms of what happens, Ruth, but it is, it's highly unusual and unexpected. Orpah does the expected thing. She protests, "I love you," whatever, and then she goes home. It's interesting, some later rabbis didn't think much of Orpah's behavior, and perhaps the writer of Ruth doesn't think much of it either. You might recall the meaning of Orpah's name. Orpah means "the back of the neck," and that's what you see when someone turns away from you. It's not very complimentary. All these names in Ruth mean something. Malan is, you know, sickly, and Chilean is weak, and Naomi is sweetness, and Ruth is friend, and Boaz is strength. All these, you know, I mean, this is what you do in folk tales and fairy tales, right? You give people names that describe their characters. So, Orpah doesn't have a very complimentary name, and some later rabbis suggest that when Orpah was on the way home, she was abducted by local Moabite men, and she was sexually assaulted and then murdered, and she never made it home. And that's what happens when you turn your neck toward Israelites, that God doesn't like such behavior. Now, that's not in the Bible. That's in some Jewish later commentary and speculation, but some readers of Ruth, of the Book of Ruth, would say what this turning away was bad behavior. In fact, I think culturally, it was, Orpah did what was normal and expected, and Ruth does the unusual thing. You know, we like her. She's the hero. You know, it's a good, we think it's a good thing, but she doesn't do what was expected or what fits. Okay, chapter two.
What is that? What is, you said Malan, what about Chilean?
Malan is sick, and Chilean is, oh, I don't have it with me right now. What did I say last? Weak.
Weak.
Yeah.
Me? No. Sickly or weak?
Yeah. So, neither of them is described as being longed for this world, for one thing. I mean, their names don't give the, I mean, you know, none of us would name our children sick and weak.
No. No. Come on, Kevin.
I don't think. So.
Okay. That's interesting.
Yeah. So, I mean, and that's kind of a, that's sort of a clue that this is more folk tale than history, you know? And those are not exclusive, but it really, it works better, it reads better as folk tale or tract for the times or something like that.
It's kind of, when you look at the two, you know, we think of those who are most vulnerable and have less rights, you know, when children are put in a situation, they clee to each other. They'll either fight, or they'll clee to each other. When women are put in situations that they, it's like, well, especially back then, well, this is the way it is, you know? I mean, no, I don't like being, I don't like the impact that I have to do in my life. You know, Naomi, whether she is from, she's from the Israelites and Ruth from the Moab, they're different, they're different, but they're both women, and they're both in a society that is patriarchal, that you don't have very many rights at any. And so, you do come together on your common ground, you know, and we see that with different races and with different orientations, you know, they generally clee to each other, they find some common ground, and they find that, they either fight or find that's a source of strength.
Yeah.
And I think in this case, maybe Ruth and Naomi both saw, they both saw the big picture. I don't think any of them were in the dark. I think Naomi knew this is what's possible and this is what's not. I mean, let's be realistic. I love you, but, and Ruth's going, "Well, okay, I know that if I stay, I'm going to be persecuted. I know that if I go home, I'm going to be persecuted. We are women, we have a bond, let's face this together." And so, I kind of see a underlying current of, you know, we're the most vulnerable, we have less rights than anyone, but we do have common grounds as human beings, basically, but as women, you know? We want to be loved, we want to be protected, we want to have our needs met, you know, we want to be accepted in love somewhere, and this is where I have it.
So, a number of scholars will identify this as one of the significant themes in the Book of Ruth, and that is the theme of solidarity. And on the one hand, it is the solidarity of the suffering, and that's very real here, that having losses in common, sometimes it can, you know, fracture relationships and drive people apart. That happens as well, but in this case, having these losses in common brings them perhaps more closely together, and not only because of just sort of mutual dependence, although that's real, that's there, but who else could they talk to? You know, I mean, there is that. Who else? Who else would know? Where else would the support be? So, solidarity of the suffering. And then, and a number of feminist readers would point toward the solidarity of women, which is not a typical structure in the Old Testament, that the Old Testament has a tendency in describing the relationships of women to set women against each other. So, you have women competing for the attention and affection of husbands, especially in polygamous households. So, you have, shortly after this, you have the story of Hannah, who's a second wife to Elkanah, here in First Samuel. Hannah doesn't produce a child, the first wife does, the first wife lords it over her, so that there are two women set against each other. Rachel and Leah set against each other in the Old Testament. Sarah and Hagar set against each other. And so, that's the more typical description of the relationship between women. So, again, this is, this solidarity runs counter to that sort of major narrative.
Those books were all written by men, correct?
Well.
Because men do not.
Generally, yes. But I happen to think that there are some interesting parts of the Old Testament, in addition to the Book of Ruth, that were at least edited by some women as an act of subversion in the court of Solomon. And I didn't make that up. There are a number of scholars who play with that idea. We can't know that, but predominantly, throughout the Bible, documents are composed, written, edited, and transmitted by men, predominantly. Yep.
That puts a little view on, a little skew.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Because I really think that, I mean, just as women cannot understand things that men experience as humans, you know, men can't understand what women experience as humans.
Well, more than that, it privileges the male perspective.
Yes, it does.
So, that the Old Testament, for the most part, is androcentric, man-centered, rather than gynocentric. And so, and that doesn't invalidate anything, but it's important to just keep that in mind, that there's, that we may need to adjust our lenses in order to read the text more fully. And awareness of that, you know, can help us with that reading. It's worth thinking about asking and continuing to wonder if Ruth was written by a man or a woman, was edited by men or women, was transmitted originally by men or women. I think that there's much more of a woman's hand on the text. But some writers will point out, it certainly is possible for women to write anti-women texts, too. And it's possible for men to be allies of women's voices, too. So, even how the text is written doesn't guarantee somehow the gender of the writer or the editors. I mean, we don't know. That's why it's, we can't know that history, we can't get behind that, but we can adjust our lenses to take those different perspectives into account. That's the best that we can do. And that's why, you know, when someone will say, "Well, I think it says this," I mean, the answer has to be, "Well, yes, isn't that interesting?"
Sure.
It may well. It may well say that. And then we test that against the text and what we think that we know and see how well it fits. Okay? All right, that's helpful. Thank you, Sheri. Let's see, how far shall we go? Let's just go to verse seven first here. So, chapter two. When you look in your Bibles, you know, here in the Lutheran Study Bible, for example, there's a title. It says, "Ruth Meets Boaz." The titles are not in the actual text. Always keep that in mind. Just because there's a title in your Bible, that's the editors of your Bible who put those in. And so, you can take that for what it's worth. Now, Naomi had a kinsman on her husband's side, a prominent rich man of the family of Ilimlek, whose name was Boaz. And Ruth the Moabite said to Naomi, by this point in chapter two, is there anyone who doesn't know that Ruth is a Moabite? Well, isn't it interesting that that's, we're reminded of that? What does that mean? And Ruth the Moabite said to Naomi, "Let me go to the field and glean among the ears of grain behind someone who is, in whose sight I may find favor." She, Naomi, said to her, "Go, my daughter." So she went. She came and gleaned in the field behind the reapers. As it happened, she came to the part of the field belonging to Boaz, who was of the family of Ilimlek. Do you think we missed that the first time the writer said that, a few verses before? Well, no, that maybe this is important. Just then, Boaz came from Bethlehem. He said to the reapers, "The Lord be with you." And they answered, "The Lord bless you." Then Boaz said to his servant, who was in charge of the reapers, "To whom does this young woman belong?" Isn't that an interesting question? The servant, who was in charge of the reapers, answered, "She is the Moabite," three times in five verses here, "she is the Moabite who came with Naomi from the country of Moab." Okay, I think we got it. She said, "Please, let me glean and gather among the sheaves behind the reapers." So she came, and she has been on her feet from early this morning until now without resting even for a moment. Okay. Let's stop there and see what we think. "Go, my daughter." Now, before we get too excited about that, in just a few verses, Boaz is also going to refer to her as "my daughter." Now, that may. Now, that may be because Boaz is somewhat older than Ruth, that may be. But don't get too excited about the fact that Naomi says "my daughter," 'cause Boaz says the same thing. On the other hand, uh, Naomi does say it. So, what does that say about their relationship? Verse three, one of the, uh, one of the things that the Book of Ruth is just rolling around and rolling around is, uh, what, what is, what is the Lord's role in all of this? How does it work? Naomi has said, "The Lord's hand is against me." That's how it works. Uh, in, uh, in verse three, uh, in verse three, "So she went, she came and gleaned in the field behind the reapers. As it happened..." Uh, the, uh, the Jewish Publication Society translation, uh, this is, this is the sort of new revised standard version for, for Jews, uh, uh, said, translates it as "by chance." Now, this is, this is an odd little piece here. On the one hand, we all know now, we readers, we all know that Boaz is Naomi's relative. Why in the world didn't Naomi mention that to Ruth? It appears to come to, uh, Ruth as, I mean, Ruth doesn't know this, when she goes out Um, this was, uh, this was a standard thing for the, uh, the poor to do, to support themselves in ancient Israel. It's written into Old Testament law, that you're not supposed to harvest all the way into the corners of your fields, uh, because that's for the poor. And not only that, but then, uh, uh, trying to put together sheaves of grain by hand, you know, no combines or anything, you know, you're, you, you cut it all off by hand with a scythe, you gather it together into bundles, tie it together. You can imagine there's a certain amount of this that hits the ground and doesn't make it into the bundles. And so, then, uh, the, uh, those who are gleaning pick up the, the leftovers as well. And this is legal, this is, uh, expected, and this is really hard work. Uh, this is better than begging, and certainly better than prostitution, but, but this is, uh, this is, uh, hard, hard work, uh, and predominantly done by, uh, by women. And I wonder what Ruth's experience of that was. I mean, let's, let's try to think about this a little bit. It's clear that everyone in Bethlehem knows where Ruth is from. After all, it gets said five times in seven verses. Uh, so, here's this stranger. Uh, Bethlehem was not a city, a little...
Did she have a different complexion, or that, that they know that?
No, it's not, it's not a racial designation. I mean, that's a good question. It's ethnic. They might have thought that they could tell some differences, but Bethlehem at this time might have had a couple hundred people. Uh, and this is a, you know, this is a little town. Everyone would know, everyone would know if there was a stranger.
A new kid in town.
Everybody knew everybody's business.
Yeah.
You know, before it happened.
Sure.
You know, so, as soon, I mean, so, remember, Naomi hit town with Ruth in tow, and, and there's this big celebration because Naomi's back. Nobody's celebrating Ruth.
And she brought somebody with her.
And she brought this, and not just somebody, huh, this enemy with her. And then, not too long after that, sends that woman out into the fields. You can imagine that, you know, uh, the grain that's available to be gleaned is not an infinite amount. If I get some, you don't. So, here's this Moabite woman, who wasn't here yesterday, that means there's that much less for the rest of us. I don't imagine that this was a very happy experience for Ruth to begin with. Uh, I don't imagine that she was receiving, uh, much help from other folks in, in her I would imagine that, that she was the subject of not only ridicule, uh, and isolation, but, uh, it was probably best that she didn't get too close to the other gleaners, because they probably would've smacked her one.
Had harassment.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. So, that's, that's the, that's the scene there at the, at the beginning of chapter two. So, yeah, Al.
Why did she have to ask permission?
To glean, um...
She says, "Can I go out?" Why did she have to ask permission?
Did they all ask, ask permission?
No, no, she asked...
No, she asked Naomi.
Not of, not of the people in the field. She asked permission of her mother-in-law.
All right.
So, why?
Well, yeah, Naomi is, Naomi's in charge at this point, of the household. And so, there is that kind of hierarchy. As we go along, Ruth is gonna exercise more independent initiative. She's gonna do some things that Naomi doesn't ask or tell her to do, but at this point, uh, at this point, it's, it's Naomi's deal.
Thanks, Jim.
And, I mean, that's an, um, it's a respectful thing to do. It does honor to Naomi. I mean, I, in, in this kind of setting, I think that it probably wouldn't have occurred to someone in Ruth's position to do otherwise than to ask. Even though, I, I mean, y- your, your instinct is right. I mean, Ruth's a full-grown woman at this point. She's not fifteen anymore.
But she's not in her own country.
She's not in her own country, or in her own house, or in her own anything.
And I think she may still feel like, "No, no, 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 I, I wanna be with you," kinda like, "I wanna earn my keep, I wanna prove I'm useful to you," you know, and that, and it's hard work. Naomi's probably not a young woman.
Yeah, I don't think that this would be something that Naomi would even be able to do for very long at this point, so...
I'm thinking because it says, "To whom does this young woman belong," that Ruth stood out amongst the rest, that maybe the rest were older widows, and she was...
Maybe, but I, I don't think so. I think maybe it's in comparison to Boaz's age, not to the other gleaners' age, 'cause it's Boaz who asked the question, you know, "To whom does this young woman belong?" Yeah, Al.
If she wasn't attractive, would he have asked?
Well, as, as commentary on the Book of Ruth develops over the centuries, um, Ruth keeps getting better and better looking about, uh, every generation.
Go to Israel, I'm in the look, oh, worse, you don't know.
It, you know, it doesn't say.
No.
It doesn't say, but the rabbi speculated that, that she must've been just stunning, otherwise why in the world would this Israelite man have anything to do with her? That's one of the assumptions. Uh, do we know that? I mean, no, we don't, we don't. On the other hand, there is this kind of literary figure in, in the Old Testament of, of, uh, stunningly beautiful but barren women. Sarah is, is one of the first models for that. Uh, her name originally is Sarai, which means princess, and, uh, and it appears that everyone who gets a look at Sarah wants to marry her, because twice Abraham, in fear for his life, passes, passes her off as his sister so that he doesn't get murdered, so that they can marry the widow. So, you know, that's kind of the, the template for some of this, the, the beautiful but barren, uh, wife. Uh, you know, the rabbis, I think, take off from that a little bit, but mostly it's this logic, that why in the world would this, would this well-to-do, well-placed Israelite man, you know, why? Unless she was really something.
Sure.
Now, I don't, I don't know about that. I, uh, you know, I think, uh, you know, for us men, mostly the grass is greener on the other side. I mean, she probably didn't have to be that good-looking, she was just different. Yeah, yeah, you know, you know, a little new talent, I mean, you know, we men, we're like that. Maybe that's a revelation to some of you, but it's true. What else do you observe here? Be sure and observe something, so I can eat some cake.
It's not significant, but for me, it's a word, and it's interesting, uh, androcentric, and then something else centric, uh, has to do with...
Very few...
Is it men or women?
Yeah. Androcentric is man-centered, uh, from the Greek word andros, for male. And gynocentric, you know, like gynecologist, is woman-centered. Yeah, agune, agine is, uh, is woman, uh, female, more, more accurately. Well, well, no extra charge.
No charge. I like it.
I think she must, Ruth must've really worked hard though, 'cause down here it says she, she ended up with thirty pounds of barley.
Yeah, yeah, and ephah.
Yeah, and, um, over here, I don't, maybe I don't know what a head of, does barley grow like, like wheat? Then why did they call it a ear of?
Well, I, you know, whether they called it that or not, I mean, that's how the translation works out. Yeah, um, but yeah, an ephah is estimated to have been about thirty pounds, which is a whole bunch.
That would be a lot of...
Uh, now, remember, as we read ahead, and maybe we will, uh, no, we won't today, um, you know, it's Boaz who makes the arrangements, that she has access to that much. But, uh, yeah, she still has to collect it all and carry it all.
Well, that one would make...
And fend off the, I mean, yeah, so here's Boaz, and all these other gleaners who've been probably coming to this field for years, for years. And all of a sudden, the first day she walks home with thirty pounds in her basket, this could not have been a popular, uh, action.
Or else she was just working so hard to ignore all those nasty women.
Yeah, well...
She got a lot of work done, I know.
Yeah, she may have, but that doesn't mean they wouldn't walk up to her and kick her basket over.
Yeah.
Yeah, or kick her.
The, the, I'm not familiar with barley either, but, uh, uh, that wouldn't, that would just include the heads, not the stalk, so that would, I would assume.
Yeah, I'm sure that they would...
And so, thirty pounds of that would be a lot.
Yep, yeah, 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 as the Lutheran Study Bible says, maybe yours do too. I mean, two-thirds of a bushel. You know, I mean, you've seen a bushel basket. Yeah, this is a lot.
She does it by hand, or they, they do it by hand.
Yeah, and of course, you don't want to spend energy carrying home straw.
No, no.
So, yeah, it's, you know, it's, it's, uh, shucked off of, of the, of the stem there. So, and thirty pounds of barley would go quite a ways for two women. This is a, this is a good, a good start here, uh, that's for sure.
In several places, she's referred to as the servant girl. How did she become a servant girl when she's kind of, um, um, what, what's the word I want? She's a freelance. Now, he, he does say, he does say to her, "Stay with my servant girls, so you will be, you know, fun." But, uh, then even in the later chapters...
Oh, okay.
She says to him, "One of your servant girls."
Right, right. In verse fourteen, or, I'm sorry, in verse thirteen, for example, uh, we can get some of that dynamic here. So, on the one hand, uh, Boaz has, uh, he's got his laborers, some, uh, you know, uh, whether they were, whether they were slaves or not is not clear. I mean, Israelites were not supposed to enslave other Israelites, but it's not clear if that was in theory or in, in truth. But, so Ruth refers to herself, uh, she's talking to Boaz, she refers to herself, "For you have comforted me," she's talking to Boaz, "and spoken kindly to your servant." When Ruth says that to Boaz, that's a way, that's an expression of humility, not that she's a servant. You know, I mean, would be, people still, you know, uh, uh, you know, "Your humble servant." I mean, at the end of a le- people don't do that much anymore, but used to, uh, end letters that way, for example. Well, if I would end a letter that way, that doesn't mean I'm employed by you.
No.
So, this is more an expression of her, uh, humility and subservience, but not that she is employed as a, a servant at this point. Does that make sense? Yeah, so that will show up, uh, at several points.
I'm guessing that, uh, "in your service" is pretty close.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And I've received some letters like that.
Right, right.
From solicitors, St. Joseph, Indian, place that Javon's, boy, they get, get at you. They send you free Christmas cards and little things, and I don't like to just dump out everyone that comes. I have selected one or two. That's another, that's a story.
And Boaz referring to her as "my daughter" is a similar kind of thing. I mean, it's an expression of, um, care and respect, rather than, uh, relationship at that point. But it, it also may mean that Boaz is closer in age to Naomi than she is to Ruth, since they both refer to Ruth as "my daughter." We, we don't know, but in all likelihood, there is some difference in, in age there. So, that's far enough for this time. We'll pick it up at verse eight, and talk some more about, uh, gleaning. But, uh, you know, as, again, as you think about what we've discussed, uh, you know me, I'm always happy to go back, because things come up that need to be explained, and that's never wasted time. So, think about questions, think about business we didn't get finished, uh, and then after that, we'll go on, um, we'll go on with verse eight from there. At some point, uh, the last thing I would say is, at some point, we'll start then to make connections to some of the other women in the Bible that, uh, Ruth leads us to. Ruth gives us this sort of centering spot that will allow us to go back in the Old Testament and forward into the New Testament, both, uh, to understand not only Ruth, but what's happening in those places. So, we'll kind of draw that map as we go. All righty, uh, thank you all.